This is regular meeting of an episode of City Council's Called to Order on this 22nd day of January 2024, and council chambers left the record show all council members are present. Welcome, and thank everyone for being here tonight. We ask that you put your cell phones in silent mode, and visitors, please sign in. If you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please fill out the form found in back, state your name and address at the podium, as we must document all meeting business, and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation we led by Pastor Mac Vaughn, then followed by the pledges.
You know, when I come up to do this, when I'm at a city council meeting, it's wonderful to look across our council members and even legal staff. That's kind of hard to say. But really happy to see y'all, and so grateful for your willingness to perform, to be here, and be on the council. It's not an easy job. So I want you to know, I appreciate each and every one of you, even Patty. Anyway, that's probably... Oh gracious God, we're terribly thankful for our city, and for the leaders of our city. Oh God, we come together on a regular basis to discuss the business of our city. God, we just ask that you give us vision, that you give us grace, that you fill us with your Holy Spirit, that we might move forward in an acceptable way. God, we just give you all the glory for our wonderful city and county and country. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the code for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Staff report, Mr. Weeks?
Mayor, Mayor, and Council, I'm going to have John McKay, our graduate engineer, and Jennifer Rayner, Public Works Director, come up and give you a CIP update, as well as talk about the Public Works Department operations during the freezing weather that we had.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Looks like CIP updates are going first. So first off, y'all saw the weather out today. Don't expect a lot of progress this week. We're expecting that rain to continue. So it's a good week for us to catch up, and we're using it as best we can. Ms. Patty actually walked in on us, saw papers everywhere in room 203, as we're looking through.
It's like fun.
It was for about half a day. But, so, kind of stuff, some stuff going on, small. This is this month, and next month, or the months, I'm kind of aiming to close out some paperwork on last year's projects, just make sure all our records are straight, everything, put those projects fully to bed. Conlake's gas loop, so, we're continuing to install the four-inch east of the airport Friday. I'm sure y'all saw on Facebook, we did have a short-term low-pressure issue when we were making a tie-in. We were tying in a four-inch, there's from the highway, all the way down to the two entrances to Conlake's off Fairway Drive. We're still investigating the root cause, but there were a couple of people who called in, needed help, and we provided it for the water heaters. That development, being as new as it is, they don't have standing pilots on their furnace. So, we had no calls for that. Everything seemed to be fine in that. As we keep going, we're getting out of this freeze mode, which you'll talk more of, we're going to be keeping looking. The, actually, on a previous project, maybe stealing your thunder a bit, Hollister regulator, the new regulator station that we put in last year, was a huge asset to the city, I believe, during this freeze. It really was. So thank y'all for approving that project last year. It helped us get a lot more gas over to that side of town. The CIP project, the big one, is kind of wanted to do a little bit here, and also kind of announce I'm going to be getting with Kristen and Lloyd tomorrow to kind of put some of this out on more detail on Facebook, for citizens who don't listen into this meeting. But in Old Town, we've got Water Live on, I keep calling it that, in that little area of streets that are all interconnected, we've got Neal, we've got Sycamore, we've got Schumacher, we've got Horlock, we've got Water, we've got Kettler. I mean, it's a lot in there. Everything but Water and Shoemaker is actually over on the new water system. So, the Schumacher, they still have to lay their water. All those streets, all those streets are on, live on sewer, on the new utilities. The water, we're planning, if the weather cooperates with us into this next, into this week, early next week, we're going to be bringing that on live. It's tied in at Brozig. So in Schumacher, they still have to lay, as far as the water goes. Crews are starting to move out into other areas of town. Y'all seen them on Brozig. You're going to see them over the next couple of weeks. We're going to be potholing, we call it potholing, a lot. There's a lot of these lines that were put in in the 50s and 60s, that we can't guess anymore. We're going to have to go ahead and get in there, and get our eyes on how these lines are all connected, what's live, what's not. So you're going to be seeing us do that, and you're going to be seeing us turning, exercising valves, all over the place, to get some of those tie-ins. And, we're still trying to minimize the number of line stops that we have to put in, for this project. I would honestly, at this point, I have two more streets to look at. It's Farquhar and East Hill, but we're estimating somewhere between four and seven of those line stops that'll have to be added to this project, to be able to make all these tie-ins. The, I mean, that's really it there for the big CIP project. Lastly, I wanted to let y'all know that Jose, over at the Street Department, we've been looking at this year's street maintenance. We're concentrating more on streets that need, this last year, we did chip seal on some roads. This next year, we're looking at some of the roads that need the full reconstruction. It means less footage of roads, with, we can't stretch the money as far with it, but there are some streets that, you know, Knox, the end of Asheville, streets like that, that we're really eyeing. We're going to be talking pretty soon to engineers, make sure what we're using as cost estimates are still valid. It's still what they're seeing in the industry. And that's really kind of my CIP update for tonight, unless y'all have anything.
John, you said that most of the underground is going to be live, so are you leaving the un-lived pipes up underneath the ground?
Yes, we're trying to close off as many as we can.
So is that going to cause a problem later, when you're trying to dig?
It, there is a very real possibility we're going to run into the future, but short of digging a whole nother line, and backfilling inside people's yards, because those lines mostly are in the yards, so we'd be paying, we wouldn't be paying for new water pipe, but we'd be paying for the hole, and we'd be paying for sod on top of it, which at times is quite expensive to get these people's yards back. It was decided early on in the project, we were leaving those old lines in the ground, the water lines. Most of the sewer were actually, it was actually a little nifty trick that they had, most of the sewer is going right back in where it was. So as they dig a hole for the sewer, they find, you know, this house on the left is tied in right here, this is where their sewer comes in, they just rip out the pipe, put in a new one, tie on, and they can kind of roll forward from there. So it's actually been a real good one. Most of the sewer is getting out. But the water, a lot of those lines are staying in the ground. We're killing what we can from the valves. When we kill them from the valves, or a plug, if it's from a valve, we're removing that meter box, so it can't be confused in the future. And, outside of our records, no one will know there was a valve ever there. So that line should be, stay dead.
Well, the difference is, where the new ones are going, you know where they are.
Exactly. And we have good tracer wire, we have good tracing, we can locate them better. We have a piece of equipment we can hook on, hooks onto a wire, sends an electrical signal, and it's like a little metal detector, it can tell you right where that valve is, or right where that new one is.
Are you asking about the mains, or the surfaces?
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, that in, what is it, the 611 before you dig?
811.
Yes, okay, 811. Can you tell which pipe is live, which you're testing, or are they it?
Yes, we will know our live valves, and at each of those valves, there's a wire that runs along just the live line.
Okay.
So we're actually going to, in these areas that we've replaced it, we've gone above and beyond a lot of, what a lot of cities do, we actually have, for our sewer as well, we now have, even though it's, and we're laying it in straight, and it's supposed to run straight, even though you can, you should be able to look at a manhole, look at the other side of the street, and just go, that sewer goes right there. We're still putting in those wires, so we can find them. And so, when we're on the new valve, because we're, again, going to barrier any old valves, we're not going to have them accessible from the top, there's going to be a copper wire in there, that they can hook on to, and that's going to locate the live line, and only the live line.
Okay.
So we'll know where that live line is. Will we find an abandoned line once in the next 50 years? Probably. But, we'd rather get more of these streets fixed up, and more of these utilities, than have paid, it'd probably been, I think, $28 to $40 a foot, linear foot, to rip out the old, just to avoid that possibility.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Well, I'm excited, I finally come up to the podium again. Since he started, he's been hogging up the, all the podium time. Jennifer Reyna, Public Works Director. Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm excited to be up here. So I wanted to say thank you to the public, to the Martha Luther King Junior Parade Committee for recognizing Public Works, for being the grand marshal that day. That was really an honor to be there, to participate in the parade, and to enjoy the celebration afterwards, at the Friendship Baptist Church. That was an honor for myself, and for Norbert to be there. We actually had more members scheduled to be in the parade, but they got caught off on water leaks on Moore Street. So they were on Moore Street, they were on the recycle center that day, so they were all working, but they were really honored to have that recognized, you know? That was a great celebration, I really enjoyed it. Okay, as far as the freeze, staff, from Friday, January 12th, we, we had, today, present public works has reported, let me put my glasses on here, because I can't see anything. Okay, so Public Works has responded to 138 service calls. Majority, majority of these calls were turning on and off meters, for customers that had water leaks. So either they were requesting us to turn it off before the freeze, or after they fixed their water leaks. So we had quite a few of water leaks response. Overnight, during the day, weekends, we had Public Works out there. Public Works monitored the water towers and their levels 24 hours a day. We have that SCADA system, so they can pull it up on their tablets, and take a look at that. So we were able to see from everybody dripping their water lines, to the water leaks, we were able to watch that. We had a, Michael Bean was over here, he's our utility supervisor, gas operator, so he actually came in and stayed at one of our hotels, so he can also monitor the gas pressures. So, with that being said, every morning, like clockwork, I'd get a text, me and Jason, every morning, how's the water pressure, how's the gas pressure? So, we were in, we communicated the whole entire time. We did have some minor things happen. We had the level gauge going into the Miller Elevated Storage Tank, we had a, it froze up. But that's just something that, we kind of monitor the water lever, water levels, so it's not actually feeding the tower itself. It was just a little gauge line. Lift station, we had a check valve frozen up on Texas Lift Station, that took some time. We did have a few gas customers on Divit and Champions that had no gas. Some of that was due to water in the lines, and that gets in there during the installation of the gas lines. So that was something that was done during the development of that project. So we were able to restore the, restore customers' gas on those. So we're looking into how it got water in the lines. That kind of happens when developers put the gas lines in, and then they leave the ends open, and they don't put tape over it, so water gets in it. It passes, it holds pressure up to 90 PSI, can hold our pressure, and it will pass the test, but when it freezes, and that's when, that's when we can tell that we have an issue. So we did have some issues on Divit and Champion, so we're looking to figure some of that stuff out.
How do you fix that?
Yeah, you purge the line with gas. And the guys know how to do it, they go out in the field, and they, they figure all that stuff out. But you purge the lines, and get the water out. So, we, we had some hiccups with some of that stuff. Staff really responded really well on that. He did mention, on Friday, the 12th, we did swap over from the two-inch to the four-inch going up Fairway Drive. We didn't really think we were going to lose gas, but, you know, it happens during construction. I think, I think some of that has to do with the amount of gas being used out there. Swapping it over during the cold, cold weather, it wasn't, the lines probably wouldn't pack well, you know? And, you know, we, we responded very well to that, and we had gas back up to the customers probably within the hour. Probably, less than 20 folks out in Conlake's needed help with lighting their hot water heaters. Mr. Weeks couldn't figure out his.
Did he? So I did call a city employee. It took the city employee nearly 15, 20 minutes to get the gas to go through it. So it wasn't just me.
One more thing I would like to say, thanks to the PD and Fire Department. We, Public Works, we all work really well together, from water leaks at the animal shelter, to turning off gas at a couple of the house fires. Many, we brought over the mini excavator, and they let us play in the, in the house fire over there. I think that was, I think the guys, we all worked really well together. It's a good, we worked, we worked really well together. I appreciate all that. Do y'all have any questions? I was super nervous, because he's always up here, and I don't have any more practice, so I'm coming up more.
I've got one question. South of town.
South of town, okay.
I think we've got a gas, some kind of gas facility out there?
Yes, we have a gauge station. Yes, sir.
Okay. Was something wrong with it Sunday, because when, on my way to church, it was a strong odor of gas when I passed through?
No, there was a gas leak out in that area. Yes, sir, we responded to it. It was technically outside of our area, that was atness, but we went over there and capped it. Yes, sir. We took care of it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So it was outside the city?
Yep.
Outside the city's lines?
Yeah, we don't have service in that area, but we did respond, and we capped it. To help out. Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, coming up this weekend is the annual Grimes County Go Texan, starts Friday night.
Mayor, you do boards and commissions?
No, boards and commissions, I'm sorry, yes.
And I have a.
Reports?
And to back up even one step further, I have a question, Mr. Weeks. So we did have two house fires over the weekend. I assume the new fire hydrants, if they were, if they had to be used, were helpful, and did you have any issues?
I'm going to let my engineer talk about this?
I know, I know. I talked to Jason Kay about this beforehand. In that area, there was one on Water Street, but as we just talked about, Water Street was one of those streets that was not live. They did have access to an existing hydrant, and it gave him good flow. It wasn't hampered. That hydrant's getting replaced, because it makes no sense to leave a hydrant from the 1960s in place, when you're putting in a new line, more so than that hydrant having been, having had any issues. So the existing hydrant helped him over there at Brozig, and Blackshear, that area wasn't really touched by the CIP project. So, the new hydrants didn't touch those two fires.
We had good water flow at all of our, all of our sites. We were actually flowing, we just kind of did a quick calculation, we were flowing about 1,000 gallons per minute off of the hydrant on Brozig and Kettler Street. So, we got good lines.
Well, the response to the PD for actually finding it, the fire, and y'all showing up, was incredible. I mean, that, to live a couple of blocks away, and actually be able to see it, and watch the fire creeping to the neighbor's house, thank y'all for, for getting there as quick as you did, and making sure that was out. And the new fire truck did great, and used, okay, great, that's good.
All good.
And, thank you to College Station in South Brazos County for showing for those.
Then you have the reports from council and boards and commissions. All right, Grimes County Go Texan coming up this weekend, starts on Friday with the sponsored dinner, they're having a raffle on Saturday, cornhole, cornhole tournament, and then Sunday is judging and awards.
So Mayor, also, want to let you know that our Public Works Department will be having a team.
Oh, good.
In that competition as well.
Excellent, okay.
The city slickers will be participating.
Yeah, yeah, carrying on the Gary Johnson thing here.
Did y'all call Gary to participate?
No.
Now.
He wouldn't be able to handle it now, right?
Oh, yeah, he would.
The community challenge, It's Time Texas continues through March 3rd, so I'd, again, encourage everybody to download the app at it'stimetexas.org, and record your activities, everything from drinking water, walking, exercise, any kind of sports. And currently, Navasota is in 12th place in the small city division, so we're doing well there, and in the ISD contest, we're in 16th place in the small division, so, there's a lot, quite a few folks, you can go on the app, and you can see all the people that are participating in the community, and there's, there's some with a bunch of points, so they're, they're really helping out a lot, so join in if you can. Coming up on the 29th, the library is having a little, I guess, coming out party, to show you some, some of the new things at the library. And, just a little hint, a couple of things, or the teen zone and the reading lounge, it'll be unveiled, I guess, and so, so come out on the 29th to the library at 5:30. Public meetings for the NISD bond are, there's two meetings left, February 1st and February 5th, 6:30 at the ISD Admin Building. On the 10th of February, coming up is the Galentine's Downtown Sipping Shop, that's from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and again, that's February 10th. And then coming up down the road a little bit, an episode of Theatral Arts, Eurydice, I think is how you pronounce that, Eurydice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I did look that up, by the way, I Googled it to make sure I pronounced it right. That starts February 9th, runs through February 25th. So come on out to your local community theater. Item five, consideration of possible action on Resolution 756-24, delegating to the city manager the authority to determine the method of procurement under Texas Government Code Chapter 2269, that provides the best value for the city of Navasota.
Deputy Mayor and Council, I didn't say it last time, John McKay, graduate engineer. So what the resolution you have before you is, it allows us a little bit more leeway, and it's fairly common in cities, on how we award large construction projects. So, Carrie can step in anytime that I'm misspeaking, but the, the way the laws are written in Texas, the default is, you advertise for bid, you take the lowest bidder, essentially that you can't prove is unqualified. So, there is, with this resolution, one of the things that it allows you to do, is you can, instead of asking for a request for bid, which is technically what that's called, you can ask for a request for proposal. And this allows you a little bit more, especially for technical projects, if we, you know, laying a street worth a while, anybody with a ditch which can take care of that, as long as they've got good financials, they're going forward. If you take a couple extra steps, you can ask for a proposal, that goes more into the plan, and allows you to weight some of these things, like, is your office local enough you could respond if there's an emergency? Do you have a history performing these projects? Do you work well with this team? Do you have a plan in place for the project? It allows a little bit more of that kind of award. It's still majority based on price, but with some of the technical stuff we have coming up, read, water well, water tower, where there's not very many players here locally, and there's some folks outside of town that are used to different levels, different kinds of contracts and stuff like that, they may not know this aquifer very well, for example, in the water well example. You know, I haven't passed it through Carrie, I know one of the things, we're looking at drilling in the Jasper and the Catahoula, I don't want someone who drills, you know, up in Austin in the Edwards Aquifer. That's a whole different ballgame. You know, if all of your work's up there, I want someone who's, who's completed wells in this area. You know, that, that needs to have some weight, not just the lowest price. So that's what this resolution is allowing, is for me and Jennifer to agree, and send an email to Jason, and say, Jason, this project is technical, I would like to do this one as a proposal, I'll take care of all the extra paperwork that comes with that, and it allows him to help us through that decision process of choosing some projects that we grade, as opposed to just taking the bottom dollar.
And to clarify, the award will still be made by the council, so it will still come to the city council. This just allows the city staff to proceed under, that's right, when we advertise for bids or proposals, it allows for different alternative, is what they're called, understated all, alternative delivery methods, to get proposals, bids, where you can take those other factors into consideration, not just price. And so, that would prevent, you know, in the past, we've had some projects that, like, well, maybe that lowest bidder's not the best bidder.
You get what you pay for.
That's right. So, it allows some.
Any spending dollars.
Flexibility in terms of decision-making, which makes sense for the council experience, you know?
Yeah, maybe prevent something from.
Correct.
Going bad down the road, yeah.
In the long run, it probably saves us money.
That, that's correct. And again, the council still will make the ultimate decision, determine whether or not it's the, you know, the, the best value for the city.
But the staff recommendation would come forward with more than just, this is the lowest bidder.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
I like it too.
So what this prevents is the city staff coming to the city council, and asking you to enact a resolution, which says, yes, this is the, we determine that this is the best method of going out for proposals. It would skip that step, allow Jason to make that determination, and then bring the proposals back to you for final consideration.
How defensible is this legally?
Oh, it's completely defensible, it's set out in state law. It is, it is set out specifically in Chapter 2269 of the Government Code, so it is completely defensible, yeah, 100% confident in its defensibility.
And it's used quite heavily here locally, just up the road. So, a lot of the examples, when I was showing Jason and Jennifer what we wanted to do with these proposals, I was just able to go on to the Brazos Bid website, and just, I could pull down almost every single one of their capital improvement projects as a request for proposal.
And it, it wouldn't require executive session or anything like that?
No, sir. Okay. No, sir. It's very common.
Yeah.
You know, this authority has been there for a number of years, but, you know, cities and engineers have been kind of slow to make the transition, and take advantage of these new provisions. But, but now, it's very, very common for this to be, for these methods to be utilized.
Financially, it's still the same, as far as the budget and everything?
Yes, sir.
It, it will make awarding the construction contract feel a lot more like awarding professional services, where you've seen in your packages, they call that a statement of qualifications, and you'll see, and when you see in your statement of qualifications in your packet, you'll see the grading sheet, there, there's a little mini committee that's formed within city staff, so that it's not just me, John McKay, coming up and saying, I believe this person. You know, we got to make sure that a group of us agree that this is really what we want to bring to council, but it's going to feel a lot like the professional services, it's just for the main construction side.
Had we had this prior to the last Creeche State project, we'd probably not still be.
Would have awarded some.
We would have awarded somebody else and been done with that project.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 75624, delegating to the city manager the authority to determine the method of procurement under Texas Government Code Chapter 2269, that provides the best value for the city of Navasota.
Motion by Ms. Peterson, second, by Mr. Gussner, to approve Resolution 756-24. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and you oppose? Aye, and you oppose? None, item carried.
Thank y'all.
Item six, consideration of possible action to approve Resolution 757-24, the city Navasota investment policy and strategy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, yes, we are requesting approval on Resolution 757-24, um, in accordance with Chapter 2256 of the Texas Local Government Code, uh, known as the Public Funds Investment Act. Uh, we are required to adopt an investment policy by rule, order, ordinance, or resolution. The investment policy should be reviewed and approved annually by the governing board, being you, and, uh, all changes to the investment policy must be outlined. So, the only changes that we're, um, proposing, or that we're making on the proposed investment policy is, um, my title, so rather than Finance Director, just change it to Chief Financial Officer.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 757-24. Second. Motion by Ms. Gessner, second, by Mr. Foltz, to approve Resolution 757-24. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, and you oppose? None, item carried.
Thank you.
Item seven, consideration of possible action on quarterly investment reports for first quarter of fiscal year 2223, October 2022, through first quarter of fiscal year 2324, December 23, as well as the annual investment summary FY23.
Um, so, section five of, uh, our new investment policy, uh, requires quarterly reports as well as an annual report. There's been a little bit of a delay in getting these reports, but this agenda item should catch everything up to the most recent completed, uh, quarterly report. Um, in FY23, the city earned $429,648 as investment income. As of today, there are two CDs that are expected to mature by the end of our fiscal year. Their combined balances are $493,000. Staff is recommending that we move the funds to one of the investment pools, preferably Texas Class, as the interest has paid out, is paid out daily, and the rates are a lot better than the CDs, um, at present. The rates are 1.6 and 0.65%, respectively. With Texas Class, the monthly, uh, average yield is 5.5744%.
That's a no-brainer. I'm real happy to finally see this, and I hope that the next time we'll have smaller packages coming through, coming through on a regular basis. There's a lot to wade through. Uh, I move that we approve the quarterly investment reports for the first quarter of fiscal year 2022 and 2023, through the first quarter of fiscal year 23, 2023 and 2024, as well as the annual investment summary for fiscal year 2023. Second. Motion by Mr. Gessner, second, by Mr. Foltz, to approve the quarterly investment report, uh, first quarter FY2223 through first quarter FY2324, and annual investment summary FY23. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, and you oppose? None, item carried.
Thank you.
Item eight, consent agenda, which consists of the second reading of ordinance 1038-24, authorizing participation with interguit service area cities in matters concerning Interguit Texas Inc. at the Public Utility Commission of Texas in 2024, and authorizing the hiring of lawyers and rate experts. And second item, approve the revenues and expenditure summary report as of December 23. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda, uh, second, which includes a second reading of ordinance 1038-23, and the revenues and expenditures for December
I'll second, but is it 3824?
24.
Yeah. 1038-24. Right. Is that correct? You're right. Motion by Mr. Gessner, second, by Mr. Foltz, to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, and you oppose? None, item carried. End that being the last item we're doing.